Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Mashpee's annual town meeting. I'm going to ask you right now to stand and face the flag, and we'll do the Star Spangled Banner. And then after that, you may sit, and we're going to have the Mashpee Chamber Choir, High School Chamber Choir sing. So, without further ado, I pledge allegiance. Thank you. You can be seated for the time being, and I'm going to introduce Ms. Kelleher, who's here with the Mashpee High School Chamber Choir. Thank you. That was the Mashpee High School Chamber Choir. Before we get started, I was given a card. There's a car outside, a red Rab 4 Toyota, 4CB338. It's still running. Also, I would like to remind everyone before we start that the town elections are on Tuesday this year, May 17. With that, we're going to start with the special town meeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and summon the inhabitants of the town of Mashpee who are qualified to vote in the elections to meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday, the second day of May, 2016, at 7:00 PM, for the following purposes: to act on the articles contained in the following warrant. And as usual, and as is our rules, I'd ask whoever would like to speak, I'll recognize, but you must go to the microphone, you must state your name, and you must state your address. This is all for the record, to make it legal, so please do that. All right. Article one, I need a nine-tenths vote on this, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer $2,492 from revenue available from appropriation to pay previous fiscal year unpaid bills as follows: GHD, $1,074; Tyco, $752. Mr. Cahillen.
I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer $2,492 from the revenue available for the appropriation to pay previous fiscal year unpaid bills.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
You recommend approval.
Finance Committee recommends approval. Any discussion on Article one as moved? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article one say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article two, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer $256,200 from revenue available for appropriation to the snow and ice account, or take any other action related thereto. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer $256,200 from revenue available for appropriation to the snow and ice account.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Okay. Finance Committee recommends approval. We had a very mild winter, but snow and ice, we always worried about that. Any discussion on Article two? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article two as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article thirteen.
Three.
Article three.
Nice try.
You know, and there's no Red Sock game, there's no Bruins, there's no Celtics. Article three, see if the town, I'll do it without my glasses. See if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws in accordance with the provisions of the Mashpee Home Rule Charter, Section 5-1B, by adopting the following bylaw as Division 1, Part 1, Chapter 1, Article 5, Section 1-7: Reorganization of Town Government. Department of Natural Resources, together with the plan of reorganization submitted herewith, which shall be amended, appended to the town bylaws in the form of an administrative code further, to amend General Bylaw, Part 1, Chapter 1, Article 5, Section 1-6, as provided below, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Gottlieb.
I move the town vote to approve Article three as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relation thereto."
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article three? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article three as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article four, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 6, to reserve from the Community Preservation Fund balance for appropriation of following amounts: $18,375, 10 percent for open space recreation purposes; $18,375, 10 percent for historic purposes; and $18,375, 10 percent for community housing purposes, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. O'Hara.
Evening, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 6, to reserve from the Community Preservation Fund budgeted reserve the following amounts: $18,375, 10 percent for open space recreation purposes; $18,375, 10 percent for historic purposes; $18,375, 10 percent for community housing purposes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article four? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article four as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article five, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer $330,000 from the Community Preservation Fund Affordable Housing Reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40B, Section 5, for the purpose of funding the Mashpee Housing Assistance Program, for a three-year period, by way of a CPA award of $110,000 per year, including any necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto. Your programs have probably a different count. It was a mistake, but the boards up here will correct that, or I will. But right now, let's take a motion from Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer $330,000 from the Community Preservation Fund Affordable Housing Reserve, in accordance with the provisions of MGI, MGL, Chapter 40B, 5, for the purpose of funding the Mashpee Housing Assistance Program, for a three-year period, by way of CPA award of $110,000 per year, including any necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee does not recommend approval of this article.
Okay. So, in your warrant, it might have said, "they did, they don't."
And we didn't either.
And they didn't either. All right. Discussion on Article five?
Mr. Moderator, may I suggest to the people on the desk that they put their microphone closer to their mouth, I don't know the people in the back in here.
Okay.
But could I, could we please?
Name, even though I know you.
Chuck Gassio, 186th Don Robin Road.
Thank you.
Could the town meeting please have the privilege of the Finance Committee's recommendation, why they're recommending not approving this article, please?
Sure. So, this article, or I should say, this program was about three years ago also in place, and there was $300,000 that was also distributed out over three years, and they came back to us again to reinstall, or I should say redo, the program. And there were some issues that we felt as though was some spotty sort of record-keeping of how the funds were dispersed. We also felt as though that there wasn't any pertaining sort of a check and balance for how the funds got distributed. So, we just sort of looked at it and said, not that we're completely against having a safety net for the residents of our town, except perhaps maybe we can look at this a little closer and have some checks and balances, maybe getting human services related. It's not finding out who actually is getting the services, but perhaps maybe the qualifications as to how they came about to get the safety net. So, that's pretty much where we're, where we came from.
Yes, sir. Just a little closer to their mic, I'm sorry.
I don't think it's on.
Is it on? Okay.
Jerry, we didn't give it a recommendation.
Thank you for that.
Not a problem. Oh, that's much better. I've had the privilege of serving the town for 11 years now, as on the Housing Authority, and the last two as its chairman. My name is Fran Laporte. I live at 42 Forest Drive. I just want to give a quick recap of what's happened in the last three years. The short-term rental assistance program has served 57 clients with an average of approximately eight months of service. Twenty-four of our clients served under the loan program for first, last, and security, emergency mortgage assistance, emergency rent assistance, and approximately 70 percent of those loans were repaid into the program. These loans were able to assist those in need of loss, of job, of spousal death, medical diagnosis, family breakup, and a lot of different crises. Our staff at the Mashpee Housing Authority works intensively with each person who comes in for assistance. They work with our clients through counseling, empowering them to set budgets, to meet financial goals, in order so that they can become self-sufficient again. We do have an agreed-upon set of checks and balances. It has been proffered and agreed upon, whereby the town HR department will also have input and oversight of this program. And the funding that the Mashpee Housing Authority is seeking is going to be from the CPC 10 percent Affordable Housing Reserves. Therefore, it is at no additional cost to us taxpayers.
Okay. Further discussion on Article five?
Jerry, we have...
Yeah. All right. Mr. Cahillen, the Board of Selectmen took a vote, and what was the vote?
The Board of Selectmen voted not in favor of this Article, three to two.
Okay. Just, yeah, move closer.
The Board of Selectmen voted not in favor of this Article, three to two.
Okay. Any further discussion?
(inaudible) information, Mr. Moderator?
Right. As a point of information, my question is, the vote of the Board of Selectmen, could we possibly have an idea of how that vote was, three to two? Is that possible?
Sure. Mr. Gottlieb.
The board voted... ...in accordance with the provisions of the Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, for the purpose of completing the Great River Boat Ramp Improvement Project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto. And your programs have probably a different count. It was a mistake, but the boards up here will correct that, or I will. But right now, let's take a motion from Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer $330,000 from the Community Preservation Fund Affordable Housing Reserve, in accordance with the provisions of MGI, MGL, Chapter 40B, 5, for the purpose of funding the Mashpee Housing Assistance Program, for a three-year period, by way of CPA award of $110,000 per year, including any necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee does not recommend approval of this article.
Okay. So, in your warrant, it might have said, "they did, they don't."
And we didn't either.
And they didn't either. All right. Discussion on Article five?
Mr. Moderator, may I suggest to the people on the desk that they put their microphone closer to their mouth, I don't know the people in the back in here.
Okay.
But could I, could we please?
Name, even though I know you.
Chuck Gassio, 186th Don Robin Road.
Thank you.
Could the town meeting please have the privilege of the Finance Committee's recommendation, why they're recommending not approving this article, please?
Sure. So, this article, or I should say, this program was about three years ago also in place, and there was $300,000 that was also distributed out over three years, and they came back to us again to reinstall, or I should say redo, the program. And there were some issues that we felt as though was some spotty sort of record-keeping of how the funds were dispersed. We also felt as though that there wasn't any pertaining sort of a check and balance for how the funds got distributed. So, we just sort of looked at it and said, not that we're completely against having a safety net for the residents of our town, except perhaps maybe we can look at this a little closer and have some checks and balances, maybe getting human services related. It's not finding out who actually is getting the services, but perhaps maybe the qualifications as to how they came about to get the safety net. So, that's pretty much where we're, where we came from.
Yes, sir.
(inaudible)
Just a little closer to their mic, I'm sorry.
I don't think it's on.
Is it on?
(inaudible)
Okay.
Jerry, we didn't give it a recommendation.
Okay.
Not a problem. Oh, that's much better. I've had the privilege of serving the town for 11 years now, as on the Housing Authority, and the last two as its chairman. My name is Fran Laporte. I live at 42 Forest Drive. I just want to give a quick recap of what's happened in the last three years. The short-term rental assistance program has served 57 clients with an average of approximately eight months of service. Twenty-four of our clients served under the loan program for first, last, and security, emergency mortgage assistance, emergency rent assistance, and approximately 70 percent of those loans were repaid into the program. These loans were able to assist those in need of loss, of a job, of spousal death, medical diagnosis, family breakup, and a lot of different crises. Our staff at the Mashpee Housing Authority works intensively with each person who comes in for assistance. They work with our clients through counseling, empowering them to set budgets, to meet financial goals, in order so that they can become self-sufficient again. We do have an agreed-upon set of checks and balances. It has been proffered and agreed upon, whereby the town HR department will also have input and oversight of this program. And the funding that the Mashpee Housing Authority is seeking is going to be from the CPC 10 percent Affordable Housing Reserves. Therefore, it is at no additional cost to us taxpayers.
Okay. Further discussion on Article five?
Jerry, we have...
Yeah. All right. Mr. Cahillen, the Board of Selectmen took a vote, and what was the vote?
The Board of Selectmen voted not in favor of this Article, three to two.
Okay. Just, yeah, move closer.
The Board of Selectmen voted not in favor of this Article, three to two.
Okay. Any further discussion?
(inaudible) information, Mr. Moderator?
Right. As a point of information, my question is, the vote of the Board of Selectmen, could we possibly have an idea of how that vote was, three to two? Is that possible?
Sure. Mr. Gottlieb.
The board voted... ...in accordance with the provisions of the Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, for the purpose of completing the Great River Boat Ramp Improvement Project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the County Community Preservation Committee. Thank you.
Motion been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article six as read and moved? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article six as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article seven, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer $75,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space/Recreation Reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, for the purpose of conducting improvement projects associated with the Aquay Bay Boat Ramp Improvement Project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer $75,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space Recreation Reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, for the purpose of conducting improvement projects associated with the Aquay Bay Boat Ramp Improvement Project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article seven? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article seven as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article eight, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer $75,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space/Recreation Reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, for the purpose of conducting improvement projects associated with the Edward A. Baker Boat Ramp at Pirates Cove Improvement Project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer $75,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space Recreation Reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, for the purpose of conducting improvement projects associated with, to the Edward A. Baker Boat Ramp at Pirates Cove Improvement Project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article eight? If Mr. Baker was here, he'd probably get up and talk about it. All right. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article eight as moved, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article nine, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer $425,000 from the Community Preservation Fund Budgeted Reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, for the purpose of funding the acquisition of the Littleford Moniz Jordan property, 104 William Mingo Road, 23.6 acres identified on Assessors Map 51, Block 6, and 60, Saddleback Road, Mashpee, .856 acres identified on Assessors Map 43, Block 14, for open space and passive recreation purposes with no conservation restriction, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. O'Hara.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer $425,000 for the Community Preservation Fund Budgeted Reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, for the purpose of funding the acquisition of the Littleford Moniz Jordan property, 104 William Mingo Road, 23.6 acres identified on Assessors Map 51, Block 6, and 60, Saddleback Road, Mashpee, .856 acres identified on Assessors Map 43, Block 14, for open space and passive recreation purposes with no conservation, conservation restrictions, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article nine? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article nine, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Article 10, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Open Space/Recreation Reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, $18,500 for the purpose of funding the dis- General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, $18,500 for the purpose of funding the golf course project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Open Space Recreation Reserve in accordance with provisions of MGL to Chapter 44B, 5 and 5, at $18,500. Oh, all right, I'm sorry. I was going to word the vote in there afterwards, but, okay. I move the town vote to indefinitely postpone and transfer from the Community Preservation...
Indefinitely postpone.
Indefinitely postpone.
All right, the Selectmen are moving to indefinitely postpone Article Ten. Do I have a second?
Second.
The Finance Committee.
Do we approve?
We did not, we voted to not approve.
Finance Committee voted not to approve. Discussion on indefinitely postponing Article Ten.
Jerry, I'll take it.
Mr. Cahill, tell us why you're voting to indefinitely postpone.
When we did our first reviews of the warrant, when the Selectmen have the ability to take something off the warrant or whatnot, there's still questions in this. There's questions as to whether or not this would be public to all people. If that's the case, there's a real parking problem we have to consider. There's also maintenance problems. There's no management plan in place. It's just a little early and too soon to come to town meeting and ask you to finance this project.
Okay, the voting to indefinitely postpone because we want to look into it a little bit more. So, any further discussions on Article Ten? Seeing none. You're voting to indefinitely postpone Article Ten. All in favor of indefinitely postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's indefinitely postponed. It passes. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation budgeted reserves in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, $84,800 for the purpose of funding the Mashpee Greenway, Washington River Path and Footbridge Project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Cahill.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Budget Reserves in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, $84,800 for the purpose of funding the Mashpee Greenway, Washington River Path and Footbridge Project, including necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the County Preservation Committee. Thank you.
Second.
Community Preservation Committee, and it's been seconded Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article Eleven? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Eleven as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes. Take a motion to adjourn the special town meeting.
So moved.
All right, move on to the annual town meeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and summon the inhabitants of the town of Mashpee who are qualified to vote in the election to meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday, the second day of May, 2016, at 7:00 PM, for the following purposes, to act on the articles contained in the following warrant. Article One, to see if the town will vote to accept the reports of the town officers or take any other action related thereto. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to accept the reports of the town officers.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article One? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article One as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Okay, Article Two is the omnibus budget. I will read the article, and then I will go through each line item. For those who are new to town meeting, after I go through each line, you don't have to get up, you can just shout out "hold," and that would mean that I will go back and we can have a discussion at the end. So, any questions that you have about the budget, shout out "hold" after I get done with it on each line, and we'll note it and come back to it. All right? Article Two, to see if the town will vote to fix the salaries of the following elected officers as provided in Chapter 41, Section 108 of the Massachusetts General Laws, for the period of July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017, and further to see if the town will vote to appropriate, raise, and/or transfer a sum of money to defray the town's expenses for the ensuing fiscal year according to the following line item budget, with the maximum amount to be appropriated as shown in the column entitled Fiscal Year 2017, Department Request, see omnibus budget or take any other action related thereto.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Gottlieb.
I move the town vote to fix the salaries of the elected officers as specified under the columns entitled Town Manager Recommendation, in line Items Two and Twenty-Four of the Omnibus Budget as distributed to voters at the town meeting, and further, the town to defray the expenses for the ensuing fiscal year by appropriation, those amounts shown under columns entitled Town Manager Recommendation, and that to fund said appropriation, the town raise and appropriate $51,203,010, and to further appropriate and transfer from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account, $450,000 to Line Item Forty, $50,000 to Line Item Forty-One, $100,000 to Line Item Seventy, and $9,800 to Line Item Seventy-Two. Appropriate and transfer from the hotel motel receipts account, $75,000 to Line Item Seventy-Seven. Appropriate and transfer from the conservation revolving account, $10,000 to Line Item Twenty-Nine. Appropriate and transfer from the shellfish receipts reserved for appropriation account, $20,000 to Line Item Thirty-Nine. Appropriate and transfer from the cemetery receipts reserved for appropriation account, $15,000 to Line Item Fifty-Three. Appropriate and transfer from the street betterment receipts reserved for appropriation account, $440,000 to Line Item Seventy, $125,575 to Line Item Seventy-Two. Appropriate and transfer from the septic betterment receipts reserved for appropriation account, $29,196 to Line Item Seventy, and appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, $455,000 to Line Item Seventy, $126,275 to Line Item Seventy-Two, and appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, $1,400,000 to Line Item Seventy-Seven.
Second.
All right. So, I'll get the Finance Committee at the end. So, starting off, moderator, line one, salary, $200. Total, $200. Selectmen, salary elected, $15,500. Salary wage, $337,979. Expense, $38,500. Legal engineering consulting, $290,000. Total Selectmen, $681,979. I have two holds. Finance Committee, reserve fund, $100,000. Expense, $65,000. Total Finance Committee, $165,000. Town accountant, salary wage, $229,025. Expense, $1,095,500. Total Town Accountant, $230,980. Assessors, salary appointed, $3,000. Salary wage, $241,731. Expense, $7,050. Total Assessors, $251,781. Treasurer Collector, salary wage, $208,812. Expense, $52,200. Debt Service, $3,270. Foreclosure, $10,000. Total Treasurer Collector, $274,282. Human Resources, salary wage, $312,613. Expense, $57,725. Total Human Resources, $370,338. Information Technology, salary wage, $232,554. Expense, $231,288. Equipment Replacement, $27,000. Total Information Technology, $490,842. GIS, salary wage, $67,153. Expense, $21,595. Total GIS, $88,748. Town Clerk, salary elected, $70,603. Salary wage, $80,682. Expense, $9,185. Total Town Clerk, $160,470. Elections Registration, salary wage, $51,759. Expense, $17,723. Total Election Registration, $69,482. On that page, there are two holds. Conservation, number 29. Salary wage, $153,400. Expense, $4,100. Herring expense, $500. Conservation total, $158,000. Planning Board, expense, $7,765. Total Planning Board, $7,765. Planning Department, salary wage, $153,088. Expense, $5,555. Total Planning Department, $158,643. Town Hall expense, $274,000. Total Town Hall expense, $274,000. Police, salary wage, $3,783,331. Expense, $379,681. Dispatcher salary wage, $464,303. Shellfish propagation, $20,000. Total Police, $4,644,315. Fire, salary wage, $3,117,907. Expense, $468,129. Total Fire, $3,586,036. Building Inspector, salary wage, $296,977. Expense, $13,255. Total Building Inspector, $310,232. Tree Warden, expense, $425. Total, $425. Total School, $20,841,556. DPW, salary wage, $2,399,023. Expense, $678,876. Buildings and Grounds, $1,225,270. Total DPW, $4,303,169. Snow and Ice, expense, $116,570. Total Snow and Ice, $116,570. Street Lighting, expense, $28,000. Total Street Lighting, $28,000. Transfer Station, expense, $778,075. Total Transfer Station, $778,075. Sewer Commission, expense, $180. Total, $180. Cemetery, expense, $15,000. Total, $15,000. On that page, I have three holds. Health, line item fifty-four. Salary appointed, $3,000. Salary wage, $222,702. Expense, $22,355. Total Health, $248,057. Council on Aging, salary wage, $229,180. Expense, $38,097. Total Council on Aging, $267,277. Veterans, expense, $98,000. Membership, $33,800. Total Veterans, $131,800. Human Services, salary wage, $66,295. Expense, $44,168. Total Human Services, $110,463. Library, salary wage, $442,74. Expense, $173,598. Total Library, $615,672. Recreation, salary wage, $262,394. Expense, $40,250. Total Recreation, $302,644. Historical, wage, $7,500. Expense, $1,375. Total Historical, $8,875. Cultural Council, expense, $90. Total, $90. Principal Inside Two and a Half, $1,190,151. Principal Outside Two and a Half, $1,975,000. Interest Inside Two and a Half, $305,480. Interest Outside Two and a Half, $294,463. Temporary Borrow Inside Two and a Half, $15,000. Retirement Expense, $2,718,138. Unemployment, $60,000. Medical Insurance, $6,997,678. Group Insurance, $20,000. Medicare, $450,000. Town Insurance, $792,000. Grand Total, $54,508,856. I have one hold on that page. Okay. Thank you for your patience. We're going back to line number two. There was a hold for salary elected.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Matt McEwan, 174 Lowell Road. I am also a member of the school committee, and I have no way, these comments are no wager to the school committee. These are my personal questions. As far as I can tell, this is a recommendation by the town manager to give a raise to what is essentially his or her volunteer, and the taxpayers of persons who elect the Selectmen to their positions. Therefore, it appears that the town manager is giving a raise to his immediate volunteer, and I believe that this particular raise should be generated by the taxpayers themselves through a petition article, petitioning this town directly. And I'm not saying this is a conspiracy act here. I believe that it generates harm to people, and I can't think of any other order commissioned that's paid. And furthermore, the Selectmen have not had an increase in their workload, and I'd like an explanation that...
Okay. Town Manager, Mr. Collins.
Well, first of all, my budget is just a recommendation. It's your budget that's adopted at town meeting. That's first and foremost. Secondly, as far as the consideration of the raise, I would point out that the Selectmen have not received a raise in some 20 to 25 years. In fact, they've received, if anything, a decrease because we used to provide health insurance, which we no longer do. So, as a result of taking a Selectmen survey throughout Cape Cod, our Selectmen are paid the lowest, with the exception of Brewster, when you take into consideration health insurance coverage. Yes, they are my superiors. However, I would point out that not one of them even knew that this was being submitted, and the purpose is, because there might be some new faces four years from now when my contract is up for renewal, but the fact of the matter is, this is voted on by the people. I felt it was compelling to bring it to the people because I see what these people do in terms of volunteering their time and their effort, and I think we should treat them exactly the same as we do our town employees.
One follow-up, sir.
Last time we were elected, $10,000.
I'm sorry? Making a motion. Is there a second? Now, we're gonna discuss that motion, keeping it at ten thousand. Ms. Grealish.
I was gonna make the observation that...
Uh, you gotta, even though I know you gotta state your name and address.
Oh, hi. Deirdre Grealish, Pond Circle. Um, I was gonna make the observation that the school committee has a budget. If you take out, uh, the debt line items and the insurance line items and things, their budget is the same as yours, as the one the Selectmen control. There's five members on that board, and they've never gotten a penny. That's one thing. The second thing I've noticed here, I didn't put a hold on all of them, but the Information Technology Salary Wage Line Item has, was lower than requested. Town Clerk, lower than requested. Elections Registration, lower than requested. Fire, even, lower than requested. Dispatcher, lower than requested. I mean, they go on and on. Those people also work hard. They work every day for every dollar that they're paid. I don't, I don't think it's appropriate right now. We just had a discussion about people in Mashpee that are having trouble staying in their houses. I don't think it's appropriate to raise your, your salary line item. They're fifty percent right now. Thank you.
Any other discussion out in the audience? Any last words over here? All right, you're voting on changing Line Item Number Two from fifteen thousand five hundred to ten thousand. All those in favor of the motion to reduce to ten thousand, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
It's defeated. I'm releasing that hold, and there's the second hold. Uh, on Line Item Number Three, Salary Wage, three hundred and thirty-seven nine seventy-nine.
Dale McKay, sixty-nine Crescent. I'd like to release that hold that I made.
That hold is being released. All right, um, Line Forty-five, the Bud, School Budget, twenty million eight forty-one five fifty-six.
I'm Reese Stone, I'm here. The hold is warm, but I don't know then, um, any objections to it. I don't have anything that's ever come out with line item detail on it. But I am very concerned about the schools and what the schools have and have not to offer, and so I was wondering where I could get line item detail on that. I know that we are short on, um, your, uh, your math and your science only go up to a certain level, your languages, your French and Spanish, but they're only going up to a per-year, uh, level. Many of the offerings are coming in the way of online offerings, and I just think that, um, I'd rather take a greater look and detail, in detail, about what we're able to offer and what we're not. Currently, with students going into other towns, I'm not sure why we wouldn't be spending money to send kids to other towns, or we could use those same funds to increase and improve the current offerings in the school system.
All right, well, I mean, this is really a question for the School Committee during their budget process. I don't think we want to take Town Meeting time to talk about the school budgeting process. I don't know if there's anybody from the School Committee who wants to respond to that, seeing...
George Smith.
Oh, okay, Mr. Smith.
George Smith. George Smith, San Joanne Lane, uh, School Committee Member. We would have your invite and information that the person who requested should sort of come down to the business office in operating time, hour, and change the entire budget request over.
Okay. So, the invitation is there to come down and take a look. I'm gonna release that hold. I'm gonna move down to, uh, Forty-nine, which was the total of Snow and Ice, one hundred and sixteen thousand five seventy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Cutfordman, Tracy Lane.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't place a hold on it because of this, but I think there's a typo either on Page Three or in the Budget. Uh, two of the numbers are inverted, seven fifty, five seventy. But I'm just wondering, Mr. Moderator, you explained, you, you expressed that we had a mild winter, and yet we're asking for over a quarter of a million dollars to, to correct the line item. I know General, Mass. General Law allows deficit spending, but why wouldn't the Finance Committee try to make a more realistic line item number?
Someone in the Finance, Mr. Avis.
Well, um, I may defer this to Council, but I do believe that the, um, that number for Snow and Ice has been with us as long as I think I've been on this committee, and there's a specific reason, and Pat, I'm not sure if you want to speak to that?
Town Council.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It, it's standard practice in municipalities to hold a bottom line Snow and Ice Removal Budget every year, given the uncertainty as to what the actual cost will be, and as the Speaker had noted, by law, this is one of the few, if not the only, line item that we are allowed to deficit spend in and then rate, appropriate the funds after the fact. My observation over the years of attending Town Meetings and seeing municipal budgets prepared, it's strictly an accounting, uh, measure that's taken in order not to encumber funds unnecessarily that could be expended on other items.
Okay. Gonna release that hold. Gonna move down to Transfer Station, total expense, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand seventy-five dollars.
Chuck Gassio, one eighty-six, Dunn Robin Road. A year or so ago, the Board of Selectmen appointed a Waste Management Study Committee, uh, particularly to study the question of whether the town should go to pay as you throw at the transfer station. Uh, that is one question, uh, and perhaps to discuss the, uh, um, whether the transfer station should become an enterprise system. Many of the towns have gone to pay as you throw and have realized a forty to forty-five percent reduction in the amount of waste at, at their stations, and if that were to happen in Mashpee, the savings to the town would be somewhere in the order of seventy-five thousand. However, the Waste Management Committee decided that that was not the way for Mashpee to go, and made certain recommendations to the Board of Selectmen on changes to the operation of the transfer station to improve those operations, and I was wondering if the Board of Selectmen might give us some indication of what those changes will be, when they will occur, and how they will implement them.
Well, Mr. O'Hara?
Me?
No, I don't know. No. Oh, Mr. O'Hara, okay.
Yeah. Sorry. Yes, the Waste Water Committee, I mean, Solid Waste Committee, um, we, we had spent some time on this. I, I know you attended and watched some of the meetings. Uh, the recommendations that were made, I, I don't know if I remember them all, was a bag limit, which, there is a bag limit now on the express lane of five bags, um, and that intent is to prevent, um, small businesses who happen to be, uh, running businesses through the, uh, the transfer station, whereas for residential only, our residence, use only. Um, I'm trying to think of the other ones I...
How are you gonna, how are you gonna police the, the other, the other section that has no bag limit, where the, where the pickup trucks are coming in like they did last Saturday when I was there?
Well, this is the intent, is for, for, for all of the, all the vehicles that come in.
How are you gonna do that?
At the gate.
At the gate?
Yes.
When?
When? When does it start? When, when the new stickers, stickers are enforced?
July first.
Until I want, I believe it is, right.
Now, I've, I've read that there's been some discussion about having a further, uh, a further, perhaps a vote on whether the town would opt for pay as you throw. Is that still on the works?
No. We, that was postponed for a year under the new regulations and the new recommendations. We take a total assessment to see where we're at and see if we've reduced any of the costs of the transfer station, then we would reconsider at that point.
Okay. I'm gonna move, this is, now getting into the same thing. Go to the transfer station meetings. This is the Budget. Do you have questions on the Budget?
This is part of the, this is part of the Budget, sir, because the cost of, the solid waste of...
Mr. Gassio, I'm not gonna talk about how many bags and how many things. You got specific numbers of money? Let's talk.
How about the enterprise sys, system?
That's a recommendation that we should look at, enterprise system, but we'll, again, in a year, after we've given an opportunity for these new changes to take place, and see what the results are.
The other thing is, a couple of years ago, the, the Board of Selectmen approved a contract, which I thought was very, was very, um, I use the word brave, it's not, that's not the correct word, but was, was very forward-thinking on their part, where they, they, they signed a contract with a disposal company for, for the disposal of our household waste from the transfer station rather than the incinerator. And one, and they did it with, on the basis of five dollars a ton. However, the other part of that was that the company was going to develop some high-technology, state-of-the-art recycling along with that proposal, and that's been two years now, and nothing, we haven't heard anything about that, and what we're doing now is going back to landfilling like we did in the twentieth century. We consider ourselves a green community, but we, we're taking steps backwards. Are you going to follow up to make sure that we, we're, that, that contract that we signed is going to have that proposal implemented for the high-technology recycling?
I believe we are following up. I, I think they're following through. I don't know what the delays are. I think we're all very disappointed as a board. I don't think I was even on that, the, on that committee, uh, the Board of Selectmen at that time, but, uh, I think that the town as a whole is disappointed, and we wish we were incinerating, but that's not the case right now.
Okay. Gonna release the hold, and the last hold is on the Retirement Expense, two million seven hundred and eighteen thousand one thirty-eight. All right, I'm gonna release that hold. So, I'm gonna ask now for the Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends approval of the omnis budget as presented.
Okay. So, what you'd be voting on is the budget as moved originally, which is fifty-four million five hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. All those in favor of Article Two as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Three, gonna do the same thing, its capital improvements, we'll get through this pretty quickly, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer four hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars from available funds to various department capital accounts, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. O'Hara.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Mass Cable and Advanced Technology Account, thirty-nine thousand dollars to Line Item Twelve, appropriate and transfer for Recre, the Recreation Revolving Fund, nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars to Line Item Thirteen, and appropriate and transfer for revenue available, from revenue available from appropriation, um, four hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars to the remaining various department capital accounts.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. I'm gonna go through the, uh, line items. Please yell out "hold" if you have questions. Town Hall Vehicles, two thousand sixteen Ford F-150, Conservation, six thousand two fifty-five. Total, six, six thousand two hundred and fifty-five. The Police, lease of ten police vehicles, year three of the, three-year lease, one hundred and thirty-two thousand. Lease of one police vehicle, year three of, three-year lease, eleven thousand five hundred. Lease of four police vehicles, second year of a three-year lease, forty-eight thousand. Total Police, one hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred. Public Works, two thousand fifteen International Dump Truck, year three of a three-year lease, forty-three thousand two oh two. Two thousand fifteen International Dump Truck, year three of, three-year lease, forty-three thousand two thou, two hundred and two. Two hundred and sixteen International Dump Truck, year two of three-year lease, forty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-three. Two thousand sixteen F-550 with Dump, year two of a two-year lease, eighteen thousand eight fifty-seven. Two thousand sixteen F-550 with Dump, year two of a two-year lease, eighteen thousand eight fifty-seven. Two thousand sixteen F-250, year two of a two-year lease, eleven thousand nine eighty-five. Two thousand sixteen F-550 with Dump, year one of a two-year lease, forty thousand. Total Public Works, two hundred and twenty-two thousand fifty-six. IT, VMware Server Switch for Police, PD and Firewall for Town Hall, thirty-nine thousand. Total, thirty-nine thousand. Recreation, twelve-passenger van, year two of a three-year lease, nine thousand nine twenty. Total Recreation, nine thousand nine twenty. Total Appropriation, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven thirty-one. I have no holds. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article Three? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Three as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Four, see if the town will vote to appropriate and borrow pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, Section Nine of the Massachusetts General Law, Subsection Nine, of the Massachusetts General Laws or Other Lawful Authority, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of a Fire Department Pumper Truck, including costs associated therewith, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Cotton.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and borrow pursuant of Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, Nine of the Massachusetts General Laws or Other Lawful Authority, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of Fire Department Pumper Truck, including costs associated therewith.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article Four. Seeing none, I need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Four, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Article Five, see if the town will vote to approve the Annual Regional School District Budget for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of fourteen million five, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, and further, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one million one hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars to meet its share of the cost of operation and maintenance of the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand sixteen, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kehley.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve the Annual Regional School District Budget for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of fourteen million four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and further, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one million one hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-five to meet its share of the cost of the operation and maintenance of the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Five, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Six, see if the town will vote to establish the fiscal year two thousand seventeen operating budget for the Department of Natural Resources, appropriated as follows. Salary, three hundred and seven thousand two hundred and five dollars. Expenses, fifty-three thousand dollars. Shellfish propagation, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Total Budget, five hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and five. And to fund said operating budget, the town, that the town appropriate and transfer two hundred and twenty-two thousand two hundred and five dollars from the fiscal year two thousand seventeen Police Department Salary Budget. Appropriate and transfer thirty-two thousand from the fiscal year two thousand seventeen Police Department Expense Budget. Appropriate and transfer twenty thousand dollars for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen Police Shellfish Propagation Expense Budget. Appropriate and transfer seventy thousand dollars from the Waterways Improvement Fund, and appropriate and transfer one hundred and seventy-three thousand from revenue available for appropriation, or take any other action related thereto. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to establish the FY two thousand seventeen operating budget for the Department of Natural Resources, appropriated as follows. Salary, three hundred and seven thousand two hundred and five dollars. Expenses, fifty-three thousand. Shellfish propagation, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, for a total budget of five hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and five dollars. And to fund said bud, operating budget, that the town appropriate and transfer two hundred and twenty-two thousand two hundred and five dollars from the FY two thousand seventeen Police Department Salary Budget. Appropriate and transfer thirty-two thousand from the FY two thousand seventeen Police Department Expense Budget. Appropriate and transfer twenty thousand from the FY two thousand seventeen Police Shellfish Propagation Expense Budget. Appropriate and transfer seventy thousand from the Waterways Improvement Fund, and appropriate and transfer one hundred and seventy-three thousand from revenue available for appropriation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article Six? Seeing... Seeing none. All those favor Article Six as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Seven. See if the town will accept General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53-F three-quarters, which establishes a special revenue fund known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to reserve cable franchise fees and other cable-related revenues for appropriation to support PEG access services and oversight and renewal of the cable franchise agreement. Fund to begin operation for fiscal year 2017, which begins on July 1, 2016. And to appropriate the sum of $500,000 for expenditures from the fund and to fund said expenditures, the town appropriate and transfer $115,000 from the unencumbered balance of current cable funds. And appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, $385,000 or take any other action related there too.
Mr. Gottlieb.
I move the town vote to accept General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53-F and three-quarters, which establishes a special revenue fund known as PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to reserve cable franchise fees and other cable-related revenues for appropriation to support PEG access services and oversight and the renewal of the cable franchise agreement. The fund to begin operation for fiscal 2017, which begins on July 1, 2016. And to appropriate the sum of $500,000 for expenditures from the fund. And to fund said expenditures, the town appropriate and transfer $115,000 from the unencumbered balance of current cable funds. And appropriate and transfer $385,000 from revenue available for appropriation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article Seven. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Seven as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Eight. See if the town will vote to appropriate $376,170 for the operation of the Kids Club Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2017. Such sums to be raised from $376,170 in receipts of the enterprise or take any other action related there too. Mr. O'Hara.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and follow the following sums for the Kids Club Enterprise, Kids Club Enterprise Fund for FY 2017. Personnel, $304,970. Benefits, $26,000. Operating expenses, $45,200. Total, $376,170. And that said, $376,170 be raised through departmental receipts of the enterprise.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article Eight. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Eight as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Nine. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds, sum of money based on the town's allocated share of Chapter 90 Local Transportation Aid to provide for road improvement projects under the Chapter 90 program, or take any other action related there too. Mr. Cotton.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds, a sum of money equal to the town's allocated share of Chapter 90 Local Transportation Aid to provide for roadwork improvement projects under the Chapter 90 program.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article Nine? Seeing none. I need a two-thirds vote on Article Nine. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Ten. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer $40,000 from the Community Preservation Fund Balance to Community Preservation Administrative and Operating Expense Account. Would take any other action related there too. Mr. Kehley.
I move the town to appropriate, transfer $40,000 from the Community Preservation Fund Balance to the Community Preservation Administrative and Operating Expense Account.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article Ten. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Ten as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Article Eleven. See if the town will vote to reauthorize the Council on Aging Revolving Account through the town accountant in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53-E and a half, to be expended under the direction of the Council on Aging. Said account to be funded by revenues collected from Council on Aging Program income and expended for purposes furthering the operation of programs by the Council on Aging. And to establish the limit on expenditures from said account for fiscal year 2017 at $15,000 or take any other action related there too. Ms. Sherman.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to reauthorize the Council on Aging Revolving Account through the town accountant in accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53-E and a half, to be expended under the direction of the Council on Aging. Said account to be funded by revenues collected from Council on Aging Program income and expended for the purpose of furthering the operation of programs by the Council on Aging. And to establish the limit on expenditures from said account of fiscal year 2017 at $15,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article Eleven? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Eleven as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Twelve. See if the town will vote to reauthorize the Library Revolving Account through the town accountant's office in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, 53-E and a half, to be expended under the direction of the Library Board of Trustees in order to place anticipated revenues collected from fines and fees, which shall be used to further the operation of programs and services under the library. And to establish the limit on expenditures from said account for fiscal year 2017 at $20,000 or take any other action related there too. Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to reauthorize the Library Revolving Account through the town accountant's office in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53-E and a half, to be expended under the direction of the Library Board of Trustees in order to place anticipated revenues collected from fines and fees, which shall be used to further the operation of programs and services under the library. And to establish the limit on expenditures from said account for FY 2017 at $20,000.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article Twelve. No overdue books. All right. All those in favor of Article Twelve as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. It was an overdue book. Article Thirteen. See if the town will vote to reauthorize the Recreation Revolving Account through the town accountant in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53-E and a half, to be expended under the direction of the Recreation Department. Said account to be funded by revenues collected from the various Recreation Department programs and expended for the purpose of paying such wages, benefits, and other related costs and expenses as are necessary to conduct Recreation Department programs. And to establish the limit on expenditures from said account for fiscal year 2017 at $410,000 or take any other action related there too. Mr. O'Hara.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to reauthorize the Recreational Revolving Account through the town accountant in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53-E and a half, to be expended under the direction of the Recreation Department. Said account to be funded by revenues collected from various Recreational Department programs and expended for the purpose of paying such wages, benefits, and other related costs and expenses as are necessary to conduct Recreational Department programs. And to establish the limit on expenditures from said account for FY 2017 at $410,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article Thirteen. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Thirteen as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Fourteen. See if the town will vote to reauthorize the Historical Commission Revolving Account through the town accountant in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53-E and a half, to be expended under the direction of the Historical Commission. Said account to be funded by anticipated revenues collected from the sale of books related to the history of the town of Mashpee, which funds shall be further, used to further the operations of the Historical Commission Program and Services. And to establish the limit on expenditures from said account at $10,000 for fiscal year 2017 or take any other action related there too. Mr. Cotton.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to reauthorize the Historical Commission Revolving Account through the town accountant in accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, 53-E and one half, to be expended under the direction of the Historical Commission. Said account to be funded by anticipated revenues collected from the sale of books related to the history of the town of Mashpee, which funds, which funds shall be used further the operations of Historical Commission Programs and Services. And to establish the limit of expenditures from said account of $10,000 for FY 2017.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Okay. Any discussion on Article Fourteen? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Fourteen as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Fifteen. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer $2,544.09 from the overlay surplus account to the following overlay accounts in the amounts as noted. Fiscal year 2,0952.25. Fiscal year 2,001, 949.18. Fiscal year 2,002, 162.02. Fiscal year 2,003, 109.80. Fiscal year 2,004, 306. Fiscal year 2,005, 64.84. Would take any other action related there too. Mr. Kehley.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer $2,544.09 from the overlay surplus account to the following overlay accounts in the amounts as noted. FY 2,0952.25. FY 2,001, 949.18. FY 2,002, 162.02. FY 2,003, 109.80. FY 2,004, 306. FY 2,005, 64.84.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article Fifteen? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Fifteen, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Sixteen. See if the town will vote to continue participation in the Community Septic Management Program and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, MCWT, for the purpose of making loans to residents of the town for repairing and/or upgrading residential septic systems pursuant to agreements between the Board of Health and residential property owners, including all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any other action related there too. Ms. Sherman.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to continue participation in the Community Septic Management Program and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, MCWT, for the purpose of making loans to residents of the town for repairing and/or upgrading residential septic systems pursuant to the agreements between the Board of Health and residential property owners, including all costs incidentals and related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article Sixteen. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Sixteen as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Seventeen. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer $18,753 from revenue available for appropriation to the Elections and Registration Expense Account to purchase new voting booths for five precincts. Would take any other action related there too. Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer $18,753 from revenue available for appropriation to the Elections and Registration Expense Account to purchase new voting booths for five precincts.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article Seventeen? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Seventeen as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Eighteen. See if the town will vote to amend Chapter 172-4, the general bylaws, as follows. Replace the language of Section B-1 with the following. Quote, administrative review, submission of a form as required by the rules and regulations of the commission for minor asterisk activities within the 100-foot buffer zone to any wetland resource areas as described in the Chapter 172-2. Asterisk, minor activities are defined as those activities that are deemed by the commission to require neither a request for determination nor a notice of intent. Replace the language of Section B-2 with the following. Quote, request of determinate, for determination of applicability application, WPA Form 1 of 310 CMR 10.99. In additional forms as required by the rules and regulations of the commission, such form will require, will require by the Massachusetts Regulations 310 CMR 10.053B1, notice in a local newspaper of the required hearing, end of quote. Add a new subsection B-3 with the following language. Quote, notice of intent, Form 3 of CMR 10, filing as prescribed in 310 CMR 280- point 21 through 280.25 in Chapter 172 of the Mashpee Code and its regulations, end of quote, or take any other action related there too. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Eighteen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article Eighteen. Forms and subsections. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Eighteen as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Nineteen. See if the town will vote to amend Chapter 54, Article Two of the general bylaws, as follows. Amend the header for subsection 54-5 to include, quote, alcohol and tobacco, end of quote, and add the following sentence to subsection 54-5. Quote, the use of smoking materials on the public beaches of Mashpee is also prohibited. For purposes of this bylaw, the use of smoking material shall include the lighting of a cigar, cigarette pipe, or other tobacco product, or possessing a lighted cigar, cigarette pipe, or other tobacco, or non-tobacco product designed to be combusted and inhaled. This term shall also include such devices, whether they are manufactured as e-cigarettes, e-cigars, or under any other product name, end of quote. Would take any other action related there too. Mr. Cotton.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Nineteen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Nineteen as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to waive the reading of the next article.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Kehley. All in favor dispensing with the reading?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town to vote to appropriate Article Twenty as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second.
Motion made and seconded to Article Twenty. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article Twenty.
We were trying to look at a simple search today. And looked up how to make cashew. And so I had to do that. Use isopropyl alcohol. And you don't want to use de-nation alcohol. I guess that would show you if you go south of the country. So this Article Twenty, you talk about everything marijuana, some kind of synthetic byproduct, spice, fat salt, whatever. So I have about 10 or 15 different acronyms of substance containment, synthetic marijuana component. Those things, about 500 out of 40, trying to make it work up. So I'm a little confused. I guess it's back from first day. You take isopropyl alcohol for hash. You take de-nation alcohol, which would cause a very toxic effect. Now, is isopropyl alcohol, is that, is that so toxic that, you know, to make spice? Now, is isopropyl alcohol, is that so toxic that, you know, to make spice, whatever?
Well, I don't think I'm coming to your house. Board of Health member, anybody from the Board of Health want to address that?
Submitted by the Board of Health.
Glenn's in the back.
Right in the back. Mr. Harrington is the head of the Board of Health. Questions on synthetics?
Glenn Harrington, Board of Health. The use of the word synthetic in actually marijuana is for the, it's similar in product, but it's really a chemical. So the other uses, excuse me, is for, it is similar in nature. It is not any related to marijuana in use at all. So that's really the crux of it there.
Okay, just one more, one last section. Dash fifty-five dash seven, several ability. Many provisions are for public health to be invalidated or for constitutional protection, and certain provisions shall be considered separate and apart from the main provisions of this article, which shall remain in full force until the end. So I guess something comes out, someone adds something, makes something, gestures, whatever, and that's right, get a few hundred dollar fine, jail sentence. So looking for, so the court says, we're gonna say, hey, we're gonna allow that. So how can we enforce it? Well, I know, if anything, gives the power to arrest, and tells the court, make it terminate. Right. Okay, well, I know in this issue, I support the ban on synthetic marijuana. I know it doesn't cause harm. Just the other day, Saturday, I guess you've not upon, the opioid problem is huge. Didn't work for Michigan, because they have stronger, stronger, those cutting opium heroin with meth, it's a strong mechanism in the market. So there's technology may have to be adapted, just like, and all the ideas we use.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article twenty? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article twenty has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Article twenty-one. See if the town will vote to direct the Board of Selectmen to place the following question on the next town election ballot. Quote, shall the residents of the town of Mashpee petition the town selectmen and the tribe to enter into meaningful and timely intergovernmental consultations and coordination of land use, land use planning, transportation planning, environmental impacts on projects, the development of municipal regulations, policies, and plans that significantly or uniquely affect the federally recognized tribe of the Mashpee Wampanoag, and to provide effective mechanisms for just and fair redress for any such activities, and to take appropriate measures to mitigate adverse environmental, economic, social, cultural, or spiritual and religious impact. Miss Stone.
Marie Stone, thirty-three Shields Road. Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to direct the Board of Selectmen to place the following question on the next town election ballot. Shall the residents of the town of Mashpee petition the town selectmen and the tribe to enter into meaningful and timely intergovernmental consultations and coordination of land use, land use planning, transportation planning, environmental impacts on projects, the development of municipal regulations, policies, and plans that significantly or uniquely affect the federally recognized tribe of the Mashpee Wampanoag, and to provide effective mechanisms for just and fair redress for any such activities, and to take appropriate measures to mitigate adverse environmental, economic, social, cultural, and spiritual and religious impact.
Have a second. Second. Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen, voted five to zero against this article.
Board of Selectmen voted five to zero in opposition. Finance Committee.
Can we hear from them?
Yeah, let me just get Finance Committee.
Finance Committee voted five to zero against this article.
Okay. Going back to the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Gottlieb.
I think the Board voted to oppose the article because I think it's our general view that on a government-to-government basis, the town and the tribal council have an intergovernmental agreement that provides the framework for relationships between the town and the tribe on all matters involving the two governments. And it is our belief that that tribal, that intergovernmental agreement has served appropriately, has enabled the town to address the formal requests of the tribal council to perform in areas such as support for tribal recognition, support for land and trust, support of the gaming applications, and provides an appropriate basis for us to talk about and deal with government-to-government issues of concern to both parties. And that absent a demonstration or request by the tribal council itself, that they are somehow not being adequately served through the intergovernmental agreement, it seems like that provides an ongoing appropriate basis for us to have the relations that we seek to have, and we have on a productive basis since its formation. I think the Board feels that whenever we've been asked to perform, we have done so. We've been able to use under the intergovernmental agreement, we've been able to come to conclusion on the request recently for action that was required of the town to support the land and trust determination. We have executed in the past year the contemplated public safety agreement that provides the framework for police and fire services to be provided, by the town, to the tribe with appropriate permission and for access to tribal lands. And we feel that we've had a demonstrated process that works, and we would like to continue with it at IGA. To the extent that the tribal council itself has concerns that they would like us to address, we stand ready to do so. We offer the recommendation, you know, in full respect of our responsibilities and obligations under the existing agreement, and feel that it provides the basis for good communication, and we want to continue to work along that framework.
Thank you. I can't see behind the podium. Thank you for your response. I would have to respectfully disagree about a couple of points here. I'm not standing here as tribal council, but as a resident of this town, as many of us are all here, as residents of this town. So that you would have a tool, a mechanism that operates between yourself and tribal council, I think that if it was as robust as you tried to describe, that I probably wouldn't be standing here. So on July fourteenth, when you met the tribal council, because we had heard, we heard that, in fact, I'm gonna go through this time, go through it the way things occurred, because some people may have commented in the tail end and just seen articles. But on July fourteenth, after, I became aware of a land disposition project, which in and of itself, the name to dispose of land in any Indian territory is frightening. It came to my attention that you initiated the land disposition project, and were going to allocate parcels to a variety of causes. You're going to sell some Indian land, you're going to allocate some for portable housing, wastewater treatment, reserve, conservation, et cetera. Selectmen Gottlieb had indicated that you had gone out and inventoried all the unclaimed parcels of land that were not being used and had been taken for tax items, saying that it had never been done before, although the tribe always knew where the parcels of land were. We actually carried an original map with all of the ancestral family names and have tied those to the modern-day relatives. Both sides, the tribe and the town of Mashpee, agreed for the need to share in good faith a collaborative and consultative process for all projects in town going forward. That was on July fourteenth. We submitted petitions in August, we had a meeting in October, we were never consulted after July fourteenth, and after the October meeting, the project altogether was disposed, with no explanation as to why. Considering the word disposition again, I thought, well, if it's going to be disposed of, then why not give it back to the rightful owners, to Mashpee Wampanoag people? Considering that it is still illegal to sell Indian land in this country under federal law, the sentiment was simply to ask the town residents to do the humanitarian act of just returning the land to the tribe. It's not collecting taxes, so it's not going to lose any money. There was no loss for the tribe, the town, or the citizens of the town. In August is when we filed these petitions. Again, we didn't hear back. Let me just talk to what this is really not about. This is not about violations of the IGA. We had experience with you in dealing with an MOU for the public safety, and twice you denied our offer of the MOU. In fact, one of those times, one of the town officials actually went and disrupted an agreement that we already had with the Orange County Sheriff's Office for resources that we needed to use from them as well. It was very disappointing to see the back for things that went on. Having not heard from you on this, having you disrupt processes to move forward with public safety, and to have to really pull teeth to get that out of you, I would suggest that, I don't agree that that IGA is working for both sides. I don't think it has any flavor of nation building, any tools or mechanisms that bring us together, but they keep us more divided. We recognize you have the largest land base, and we don't. We have the largest constituency base, and we don't. But as the new town manager expressed during our flag raising, this is Mashpee Wampanoag territory, as he expressed, this is our land. We share all of this. What we're trying to do is come to a happy medium, find a solution. Many universities and institutions train nations on how to coexist, towns and tribes together, and our town could certainly use a lot of schooling and education on nation building, because it can be a very effective and promising avenue to go down. On that note, what it's gonna do for us if we have a consultation process, it takes out the reaction. We all react to things when we hear them, but a process upfront that's agreed upon is going to make it a proactive process. And that way, no one's ever caught off guard, there's no butting heads. We have adopted a formal process for tribal consultation with the town, where we're being given consideration, because we are sharing. We are two sovereigns sharing the same territory, and that's very important. I'm going to, this is not about violating the IGA, I made that point, this is not a tribal claim to land. I want you to understand that specifically, but I'm gonna hold off on further comments when we get to the next article. The two articles do dovetail, so I kind of apologize if I go over one article inside of another one. Hopefully, you won't get confused by that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, just like to respond briefly. I think that when we went, you brought up the July fourteenth meeting, myself, Selectmen Cotton, Mr. Collins, went and met with council about the land disposition project. And I will say that there's a difference between disposition and dispose. Disposition is that we were trying to identify appropriate uses for lands, the vast majority of which went to, remained in public purposes, remained in conservation, recreation, and affordable housing, and very few were discussed or identified as potential for sale. And I will say personally, one of my motivations in initiating that project was a concern I had, that we kept coming back to town meeting over the years, looking to sell town property. And because we had never taken a consistent look at what we had as public holdings, it was haphazard. And I thought that this project would provide a context to decide if there were lands that were available for certain purposes to designate them for it. To be honest, and, you know, it was one of my objectives to absolutely limit, to the greatest extent possible, any sale, future discussion of sale of town property, because there were a number of public purposes. So, you know, I think to turn disposition into dispose of is a reach for what we're trying to do. At that meeting on the fourteenth, we asked clearly for a position from the tribal council itself on that project. We had discussion about input, it was positive, it was constructive, and we asked for formal position, so that we could take that into account in deciding whether or not to move that project forward in the form of an article to come to the October town meeting. We have not, to this day, received a formal position from the tribal council. I have opinions from individual members, but we have never taken, the tribal council never took a position, and as part of that, and in response to that, in part, the Board of Selectmen tabled that consideration of that project and never brought it to town meeting. It was over. So there was nothing, in terms of talking about that particular project, there was nothing to talk about. I think that, again, you know, it's our collective view that the existing framework provides the basis for all the things I hear, as I interpret what the petitioner suggests, it has the ability to have that open, free flow of information and relationship. If it's not, then we should talk about that. But I think it's difficult to legislate, as you are being asked to at a town meeting, legislate good intent. Good intent comes from discussion, collaboration, hard negotiations sometimes, push and pull, but ultimately coming to some common understandings of mutual interests. I think, and I think this Board thinks, that the existing agreement provides the opportunity to do that. And that if we need to change it, we should have a change in it that comes from the council and not from individual private citizens acting in lieu of action by the council.
Okay. I'm gonna open it up a little bit to anybody else who wants to talk. Yes, ma'am.
Excuse my voice, I'm just speaking as a private citizen, but I will tell you, as the right children, we try. During that meeting, I respectfully disagreed in the, we did make the council and the board hear our wishes. Our statement before the selectmen was that, or to the council, we should not be able to buy, or to buy responsibility is convicted, so elected officials are to prevent the loss of any woman or child. So we could not, as a body, support your article. We will not say that we can't defend you, but we did not support your article for that reason. We talked about history in our place and in this way that you were involved. We were also told that day, that Selectmen John Cotton had been appointed on your ladies' line, and that John behaved in all the wrongs. And that after that meeting, Mr. Cotton was to schedule another meeting, and we're gonna talk about this moment, because if we're gonna discuss the IGA, and what's discussing was a section of the IGA that provides for the town and the tribe to sit down and discuss ways that may be turned back to the tribe. And to hear nothing on that score from our leaders, since we passed the IGA, and to see that we're displaying this poster, is naturally objectionable. Secondly, the IGA also calls for the selectmen to turn over from one another one, for the staff, which, and, 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 you find no intention to do so. Mashpee, that's what you know, probably, to body. But I would also say that I have great respect for Ms. Stone, because she's a private citizen. She's exercising her peaceful way to appeal to the other private citizens in this town, and I applaud her for that. Thank you.
I'd like, Mr. Moderator. I'll come to you.
Mr. Moderator. George Benoit.
George Benoit. I feel I have to make a couple of comments here. As many of you may not know, I was a selectman in the seventies and eighties, and I know what a terrible time the town went through. I in no way want to wish that upon the town again. We have an IGA. It was negotiated in good faith and signed in good faith by both parties, and it is a document which should stand and the provisions should be applied. In that document, and I think I'm correct, it says that for the support of federal recognition that the town afforded the tribal council in their petition before BIA, that their land claims would be limited to certain parcels. And that was outlined and delineated in the IGA. I think we should stick with that. That is the foundation of our intergovernmental agreement between the tribal council and the town of Mashpee. It sets forth a very distinct set of rules, understandings, and regulations, and it makes for a very peaceful, if I can say, coexistence. I think we should stick with it completely. And to bring this up now for more land is just opening Pandora's box. And I've been there. I felt it. I saw it. I lived it. I don't want it again. Thank you.
Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to respond to the question about our meeting that we had, I actually thought it was a great first step. But I will say, just to clarify a few things, it was myself and Mr. Cahalan, our joint liaisons to the tribe. And we did that intentionally because we wanted to give it the extra effort. Mr. Gottlieb actually stood in as a second selectman for the meeting. But I will say, there's a lot of statements made as far as it sounds like this is 500 parcel piece of land. This is many parcels, and there's many designations that it could be used for. And on top of that, I think it's a new point. I would like to continue those negotiations. I'd be welcome, I'd welcome an invite to attend the council to discuss this further. Those acres, those 500 acres are nowhere right now. They're just, they are right now sitting in the same place they were for years. So I would still like to continue those conversations in a professional manner.
Yes, sir.
Oh, Larry, you're very good. I'll try to speak to Article twenty-one. Article twenty-one is a relatively innocuous proposal. I don't quite see why so much heat is being generated there. But I am somewhat shocked that there was a vote of five to zero to reject it. I feel as if people are being wronged. There is two parties, there's two sides to the dispute here, and one side says, simply says, we would like to have some, you know, in a vague way, we would like to have more talk, we'd like to have more discussion about this. And the other side says, oh, we've already talked. You don't need to have, we've given you all the discussion you want. It just, it does seem a bit unfair. I would also like to point out, and this will also exercise, well, the side of the tribe and the side of the town, there seems to be, there seems to be some possible dispute. I would like to see them be together, and probably many people would. But, you know, there are some legitimate issues and difference, but all this is, this is an innocuous proposal. And what I was going to say before the interruption is that it is also, we are not voting, we're not even voting for this. We're only voting to put it on the ballot to improve the, it's going to be an option. Make it work there, and maybe the families are even stronger against it. And I feel like there is, when I said wrong, I feel like, I don't know, I don't think this is true of everyone on council who voted against it, but I've only lived here four years, but I've heard a lot of sentiment that you don't want your children to hear. Maybe you, but that's too bad. So I would just say, this is to put something on the ballot. So I've been reading John Quincy Adams' autobiography. He was against the direct democracy of town meetings. He felt there was a small group of people ruling. But what's wrong with putting the thing on the ballot? And what's wrong with the proposal that there should be some more procedures for talking? That doesn't go anywhere. That doesn't give off any... So I'm going to hold for Article twenty-one.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Ken Bates, Ten Chippers Lane. I'd like to move that the voters be allowed to cast a secret ballot for Article twenty-one.
Discussion on whether or not you want a secret ballot. No discussion, I'm going to move it to, you can deny it, but got to take a two-thirds vote. So no discussion, there's a motion on the floor to put this vote, when it comes up, to a secret ballot. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Peters.
I actually prepared some things to say. And what I have to say, I'm Paula Peters, from twenty-five Devon Street. The things I have to say probably will cross over to Article twenty-two as well. Hope that doesn't break any rules. Petition articles twenty-one and twenty-two were submitted by an individual tribal member. Many of us within the tribe learned about them in the same way that non-named residents did, by reading about them in the newspaper or in our social media network. And just as many of you have done, we have reacted. For us, the reaction is visceral one. As Wampanoag, we are part of this land, and this land is part of us. It is very natural for us to want to preserve it and to continue to use it to sustain ourselves, as it has been our history for more than 12,000 years. It should come as no surprise that we would like to see much of it conserved or restored to the tribe. The reaction for many non-tribal members has been very different, and for some, very unfavorable. The question of whether to return land to the tribe has awakened very deep-rooted feelings of animosity, creating a divisive atmosphere not felt here for forty years. Thank you, Mr. Bennett, for pulling that out. I don't welcome that animosity, but I do welcome this question back to the forefront. I welcome the opportunity to remind people that a casino is an unintended consequence for our long pursuit of federal acknowledgement. Make no mistake, it began as an effort to restore our land and has always been about I have come to this meeting every year to defend the land. I am the Lorax for Mashpee's forests, lakes, rivers, and estuaries. I will continue so long as anyone will listen, arguing that returning tax-taking lands to tax-generating property would net little or no tax revenue gain. You would really stand to bankroll enough tax dollars for more homes with more families in need of more public services, with children to enroll in schools, and infrastructure to maintain. At best, the plan to sell these lots for development is awash, but when you consider that Mashpee is known for its natural resources, raw beauty, in many sparsely populated neighborhoods, where the impact of more development would result in the decreased value of existing homes, we would actually be talking about a decrease in overall tax revenues. My neighbors have been happy for me to come to this town meeting year after year and champion the cause to preserve as much of these tax-taking lands as possible. But now that there's a suggestion that these lots be given to the tribe, these same neighbors will likely hold up their little blue index card, propose this idea. Don't develop it, but for the love of all that's holy, don't give it to the Indians. Articles twenty-one and twenty-two are not, as the Mashpee Antiprivo suggests, a violation of the intergovernmental agreement between the town and the tribe. An agreement, by the way, I consider much like a treaty, in a long line of treaties, that we have had little choice in accepting. The town of Mashpee has a unique set of bylaws that causes us to always consider tax-taking land, conservation land, unless there is a compelling reason to do otherwise. That compelling reason must then be voted on by this meeting. These articles do not petition the town to return land. They ask voters to consider our interest as a tribe in terms much stronger than some of you are comfortable with. I ask you to consider that I and my tribe are the best stewards of this land. Consider that the three hundred some acres that we were able to preserve after decades of fighting for our federal acknowledgement is only a fraction of what we would have been entitled to had Judge Walter Skinner ruled in nineteen seventy-eight, as did the Bureau of Indian Affairs in two thousand and seven, that we are indeed an historic tribe still living in our ancestral homeland. Consider that we have a vested interest in the conservation of land in Mashpee, where tribal members still hunt and fish to sustain their families, and that we have newly established Native Land Conservancy committed to that cause. Consider that we agree that appropriately cited affordable housing is critical to maintaining our community, as is a wastewater treatment facility that prioritizes the elimination of septic waste going into our estuaries and contaminating shellfish beds. Consider that the tribe needs land for school to provide a socially and culturally appropriate education for our children, increasing the likelihood that they will thrive. Consider that we are all fortunate, whether tribe members or not, to live in Mashpee, that my neighbors and I are not far apart on what we would like to see happen for our surplus land in Mashpee. This conversation did not start here, and it will not likely end here. So consider that I will be back here to defend the land whenever it is threatened, whether it is town or tribe.
I pull this round, ninety-one Connequistan Avenue. I want to speak to Article twenty-one, which is going to ask the, this body to put this article to the vote in, I guess, November. And I'm a little confused, because it seems that we have one agreement that has provided a framework for discussion, and now we're proposing this article which seems to provide a different framework for discussion between the town and the tribe, which will come to a vote in November. And we're hearing a lot of discussion, and I'm also concerned about the way we're talking about these tax-taking lands and disposition and disposal, and I'd like to have one set of definitions, so that when we talk about these things, we're talking about the same thing all the time. So I guess my, I'm looking for clarification from the selectmen. Is this, if we pass Article twenty-one, are we going to be voting to replace an existing agreement that is what we're talking about?
No. The answer, the short answer is no, but I will defer to town council to give you his opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. These two articles, Article twenty-one and twenty-two, are permitted under the provisions of General Laws, Chapter fifty-eight, Section eighteen A. They merely establish non-binding ballot questions. They cannot require the town to act in any particular way. It is merely a sense of the voter's will, so to speak. If the town meeting tonight should approve either of these articles or both of these articles, they will appear in an upcoming regular election ballot for consideration by the voters of the town as a whole. Again, only for advisory purposes. They will not compel this, the board of selectmen, or the town of Mashpee, or the tribal council for that matter, to derogate from or violate any provision of the intergovernmental agreement that was executed back in two thousand and eight. As stated earlier by prior speakers, the intergovernmental agreement did specifically address the transfer of certain parcels of land to the tribe, and it also included a waiver by the tribe of certain claims against land owned by the town of Mashpee and private property owners within the town. It did say that we could have discussions on those topics going forward. The agreement does not preclude that. As Selectman Gottlieb stated earlier, that is this board of selectmen's position. If and when the tribal council is prepared or willing to discuss those issues, the board will engage in fruitful discussions, as we have in other reasons, other subject matters, I should say. So the vote here tonight would merely place these questions on an upcoming ballot as non-binding advisory opinions of the voters of the town. It will not force any modification or change in course of action or behavior under the IGA.
All right. I'm going to try to move the question. I'll give a couple of last words. Ms. Stone.
Yes. In regards to the last question about having an existing structure with which to communicate through government to government, my testimony is that the existing structure does not work. It's not working for the tribe. It has never worked for the tribe. You can read in the paper that it's working for both of us, but it's not working. And the primary example I've already laid out to you was the lack of communication. It's almost, it's been at least nine months. We actually even attended a hearing in August, as the vice chair had indicated, and again, we have nothing. I'm looking for an olive branch. I'm looking to say that I live in a community where continuous improvement on our relationship is paramount to all of us. And so while we may have an existing document, it doesn't mean it can't get better for all of us. And that's all we're really asking, and I don't know anyone who would vote against something getting better. That's my final comment.
Stop doing your fart, Will.
Okay, so the explanation of twenty-one, I was a little concerned because it says it name-based, and I just thought that might assert some of the IGA, but apparently they say it doesn't. Okay, that's good. My other, my other observation is I know, I'm a town member, we all are town members. We all have shared the same concerns. We have to worry about potable wastewater watershed considerations, as well as conservation, and administrative utility, town services, lands, all the same common causes. And I understand the concerns. So my observation would be to kind of link together, because the other one is to report that they actually definitely returned the land, which takes it out of their control at all, because once your sovereign nation is sovereign nation. But I would hope that they would have the same concerns, because I assume they do. Most of the people I do know on both sides do have the same concerns. So my observation would be to, the articles are not necessary if we have a working IGA, but they should meet again, and maybe as a suggestion, if they ever do go to sell any land, that the tribe might be given the first option to buy it. They're going to have proceeds with the casino and other grants and stuff. And that would be, seem a reasonable concern. Otherwise, we all have the same concerns, and we are, we are going to need some watersheds to extend administrative uses for the land. This seems a bit compromised, so I don't think either of these articles are really necessary. If we have a working IGA, and we all share the same concerns, but, my final.
Thank you. Mr. Cotton, last word.
Just a couple of clarifications. As far as what was set forth, say, a year ago, as far as those 500 acres, the majority of the land was actually set aside, or planned to be set aside for conservation, just so everyone's very clear on that. But to another point, these two articles, I think they seem to be like forced. We are, I just want to... We are, I just want to, um, stress the importance of my opinion, and probably all of us here, is we are very welcome and open to further discussions. Since our last meeting, we have never been asked to participate in any further discussions. If we have, please let me know, because I did not receive an invite. Um, but, so I am very willing and open to further discussions, that there's nothing on the warrant, or on this warrant, or up to vote to consider, nothing to do with those 500 acres at this point. They're out there, so let's have a further discussion. I would welcome that.
Okay, I'm going to call it to a vote. We're going to do a hand vote, so I can get a count, majority vote. All those in favor of Article 21 as moved, raise your cards. You're voting on Article 21, as it's written, which is to put it on a ballot.
Gary, tell them to keep their hands up. Tell them to keep their hands up.
Keep your... Uh, uh, no comment. Okay, all those opposed, raise your cards. Debbie, Deb? Ball counters in. Okay, it's defeated, 220 to 98. Article 22, see if the town will vote to direct the Board of Selectmen to place the following question on the next town election ballot. Quote, "Shall the residents of the town of Mashpee petition the town selectmen requiring that the town move to return forthwith the remaining undeveloped land parcels identified in the selectmen's 2015, quote, 'land disposition project,' end of quote, to the Mashpee Wampanoag tribe and to prohibit any future sale, conservation, or reserve, and other use of the Mashpee land identified in the project?"
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to see if the town will vote to direct the Board of Selectmen to place the following question on the next town election ballot. Shall the residents of the town of Mashpee petition the town selectmen requiring that the town move to return forthwith the remaining undeveloped land parcels identified in the selectmen's 2015 land disposition project to the Mashpee Wampanoag tribe and to prohibit any future sale, conservation, or reserve, and other uses of the Mashpee land identified in the project, with the exception of the two affordable housing projects that are being planned, the two wastewater treatment projects that are being planned, and the transfer station?
Do I have a second? Second. Um, Selectmen? Bye. Discussion on Article 22, Ms. Stone.
Yes, again, let me reinforce and clarify that we do not find this to be in any conflict with the IGA, as noted in the, uh, in the report from the Finance Committee. Um, we're requesting the return of those 516 acres, excluding the affordable housing, wastewater treatment, and transfer station. As the man noted earlier, we do have shared interests all around. We all live here. We all share the resources. But we ask for the return to the tribe and for those remaining acres to remain untouched for the preservation of all wildlife. Mashpee is way overbuilt and it's time that it stops. We are asking the town residents to take the first steps towards repairing centuries, centuries of humanitarian despair, by repairing the harm caused through the abandonment of any ethical considerations, to repair the dignity and every inequity or violation of our rights as Wampanoag people on this land that was not afforded to us, but that has been assured to every other race in this country, our country. In an exercise of true diplomacy, we are asking that what called the goodwill gesture to all of humanity and a moral obligation, a personal moral obligation of your own, Holy Spirit going to convict you, and of the highest responsibility and trust to the original inhabitants of this land, what is rightfully ours. This is about agreeing to not just a formal consultation process, for if that IGA was effective and working, we probably wouldn't be standing here right now. So we are proof that it is not working. So the question is, should we wait for the next obstacle to come between us and not have a proactive manner for which to resolve it? The IGA is just the IGA. It does not dictate or mandate the steps to achieve those results. This is about our land. Understanding the tools of nation building and what factors account for growth, uh, what factors are working in communities and finding common ground, knowing what role culture should play, and what our shared resources are, and how to protect them. Whether we want to see a future full of clean energy building in our construction, in our road projects, or housing projects, in our education system, if we want to infuse that. The tribe is in a position, through all of the access to federal funding, okay, that cannot even begin to compare to what it would cost to return those 516 parcels, minus the ones that I mentioned. But we're in a position to leverage so much funding in this town. What we're looking for from the town, I should be facing this way, because I'm really petitioning as a citizen, so I want to talk to you about it. We, we, let me shout it out earlier, where's your heart? You all know the history here. And what we're looking for is an olive branch. We are not looking to say, let's set up shop and take title to all tax-taking lands. That's not what we're saying. We're saying, as they affirm, there's 500-some odd parcels out there that are unallocated. We have a few projects. We share those causes. We support those projects. And there's no objections that we share those concerns and share those resources. And because we're not in violation of the IGA, how are we not in violation? We're not filing a tribal land claim. I'm asking you as a citizen, citizen, to dig down deep and do the right thing off of us of olive branch and say, you know what? I'm glad there was a Mashpee. I'm glad there were stewards taking care of this place. I'm glad the land is the land. And do we want to overdevelop it? Our entire pack of coyotes walk down the middle of your road? I'm speaking to everyone in every part of town. Okay? This isn't something that we're saying, listen, just give it back. No, I'm asking you to give it back. I'm asking you to give it back. What this request is not about, this is not about violating the IGA between the town and the tribe. This is not a tribe claim. It is a request to do the right thing, as seen by the Wampanoag people. This is not an attempt to cycle the relationships between the tribe and the town. Rather, it is an attempt to find common ground with one another, to forge partnerships within the town, and to identify the keys to building effective, sustainable, integrated relationships. Knowing how we characterize our relationship is paramount to the future of the tribe and the town of Mashpee. It's not about stopping the town's projects already underway. As I've stated earlier, we support those projects. There are no financial losses to these properties in, in the report. I think it's got to hit the front desk. You'll see all these facts and figures. The tribe not only is in a position to leverage more federal funding to make a better community. Uh, if you look at IGAs of the past, look at Montville, Connecticut versus Mohican Tribe. These towns make out quite well. That's all I'm going to say. No harm or loss comes to the residents. Only improvement in the quality of living, the standard of living, and, um, and a good example of, of how we've already done so many things. Tribal members are also married to residents of the town. So your non-tribal members who are residents, they benefit from all these federal funding programs as well, even the rest of the residents who aren't married. Okay? The cleanup of Puffiness at Bay is one example that I'll give you, based on a grant that the tribe brought in, to San Tua Pond area. And there's many other services that the tribe has been able to provide assistance, including the residents of the town. So yes, we are asking for the town to consult with and cooperate in good faith, which means follow-up phone calls. None of this, I even heard from them for a nine-month shelf, you know, everything's going great. Um, you need to reach out to us like we need to reach out to you in order to consult and cooperate in good faith with the tribe, and in order to obtain the tribe's free and informed consent and prior approval of any projects affecting our lands and other resources, particularly in connection with the lands, the community planning, and so forth. We need a fair system to address all of these matters. Okay? You are living next door to a whole other sovereign. For you to just turn your back and say, well, we've got the IGA is extremely insensitive and disrespectful to the original people of these lands. Thank you.
Chuck Gassio, 186 Denrobin Road. Could I ask the petitioner, when she says "an olive branch", does the olive branch, as it, as regard to this five, these 500 acres, is there negoti- is there, is there, is there somewhere in between here? Is, is the olive branch that you, that you get the 500 acres? Or is the olive branch that the tribal council and the Board of Selectmen have additional discussions about these 500 acres?
The, the olive branch is both. So we need to have a concrete consultation process. So when I name to you those parcels that we would make exceptions, we believe that our needs are the same for, um, it would require further conversation. So if those three or four projects add up what the acreage would amount to, but let's say 80% or 70% is what's left of the 516. Yes, we need consultation, because the tribe, um, has been steward over this land, protecting it and preserving it, and we want to continue doing that. But it takes two people to work together. So if I don't hear back, okay, from their side and what their interests are, I, I'm not going to say that that's a fair process. But I'd like you to just say, Mark, Mark, here, take the remaining? Absolutely. Is that an olive branch? If you present it to me that way, it is.
My, my, I guess my question is, would it, would it be appropriate or acceptable if we had a postponement on this till October, with the provision that there be discussion, that, that is the sense of this audio, of the town meeting, that there be discussions between now and October relative to these 500 acres? Would, would it, would you, would you accept a postponement till October town meeting for the time to have these discussions?
Yes.
Ms. Stone, are you going to, are you going to amend your, uh, motion to indefinitely postpone?
I'd like to begin. Walter Abbott, 90 Pine Hill Boulevard, Chairman of Affordable Housing Committee. I have some real concerns about it. Let me give you an idea. There's, there's several projects we have, and I know they said two of them we can go ahead with, but they don't talk about the, like, one of the real important ones we have here is Habitat Housing. You know what the town does? We take some of this land, it's not going to help anyone else, not getting any taxes on that land. And we take that land, we come to town meeting, and we don't negotiate with Habitat that it's suitable, and we give it to Habitat to develop. We've done 18 units in town already for Habitat. We now have put that onto the town rolls. It's over $1 million of assessed value. That's now on the tax rolls that we didn't have. To me, it looks like that would make that program come to an end. Doing the two programs we have, that we're working on, and they said they'd go along with that land. And that would still put us in violation of state guidelines. The state says affordable housing in this community should have 10% of their units affordable. We're currently at 4.5%. Take all the land away, and we'll never have a chance. I don't know if we can ever get to 10 anyways. But let's say we're working towards that thing. We'd hate to see affordable housing come to an end. So something's wrong with this.
Ryan Sanchez, 16 Wampanoag. That's right. Yeah, so I don't do this much talking and all that stuff. I'm all into politics and, um, articles and tax and all this stuff. What I'm into, uh, nowadays and more than ever is love, you know? Uh, I'm pretty sure I recognize you seeing up at the podium. I might have went to yours, um, to school with your son, you know? Rich and, I don't know, I don't remember, uh, just by looks. He's white and I'm black. And, uh, she was, you know, on her way, you know? At the end of the day, I just see, uh, another human being that breathes the same air as me, you know? Walks down the same streets I do, you know? Pretty much what I'm trying to say is, uh, I, I'm, I know that all of us here are one. We're not, we're not a segment anymore. I mean, you guys, and I'm not trying to say you guys are like, uh, judging all that, but our land has been, uh, basically long to you guys. Not long, but just, uh, we're sharing it. We're sharing our land with you guys. And we have been doing this for so, so many years. And, uh, and everybody knows the story, man. It's Thanksgiving and, uh, the Europeans came over here and took our land, literally, right from us. We're way above them now, you know? Don't you, do you not love your kids? You know, everything I stand here and say is about love and respect, you know? You guys have had it how many years now? Uh, how many millions and trillions of dollars have you guys profited all these years? And how many people have you lost? We stand for maybe 10, 15% of what our tribe was. It's a, that was one of the biggest genocides ever in history. And, and we're still, still struggling. Why, why is it that, uh, that we have to pay land taxes and such? When this is our money from the beginning? I don't know what a tax is. I, I hear all this talk about money, you know, money, money, money. What, what, what is, what is our idea? What, what is, what is, uh, yeah, I'm not hearing that. What is, uh, what is, uh, what is all this money for? Money is not needed. I don't know what money is. That, that my ancestors did not know what money was. They knew what the land was, they knew what love was, they knew what nature was. I don't want to pay taxes. I don't, I don't want to have to pay, uh, a million dollars to rent a house that costs fifty thousand dollars to build, and I never, and I, I don't even owe my own land, but at the end of the day, what I'm trying to say, man, is the world moving today? I just spoke for the first time ever, I'm nervous to death up here right now, still speaking, because I don't do this stuff, but I speak for the right, and I speak in love from behind, so I know it's right. And we might not win today, I'll just let you know that, yeah, because I'm not a dumb person, I seen the town earlier, we were, uh, pretty much beat by double. But I will let you know that we're, we're coming, and we might, we don't have all our members here, but I'm young and I, and I stand for a voice, and this love is going to keep spreading, you know? And like I said, we not, we might not win it today, but we're coming and we're going to get this land here because love is the most, uh, strongest force in the universe. So your corruption and, and your taxes and all this stuff, you guys have bear wounds all the time because your money system fails, but love, love fails, and nature never fails. I don't want littering on my lands anymore. I don't, I don't want, uh, disrespectful people on our lands anymore. We've had it for long enough, man, so give us our, give us our stuff back, you know, at least like you guys have been saying, man, uh, put it on the boards, mention this at the next board. I don't know anything about this stuff, I don't know how to turn it right, you know? All right, I'll read this article, uh, just, just put it on the ballot, man, and then, uh, know that you're doing right, you can work yourself in the merit at the end of the day and say, damn, come, this is coming around, man. You, 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 I'm a good person, instead of looking at yourself and, uh, straightening your tire to make sure you work great, you know? What the hell? Where is the love coming to you? You know, I, I'll tell you what I'm coming to, it's coming to love, and, and that's where I'm going, you know? Oh, actually, one more thing, one more thing. I, 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 uh, I guess I didn't really have to worry, did I, Phil? There's this old Indians, uh, Indian saying that after all the trees have been cut down, after all the fish, all the animals have been done down and, and their habitats, everything's gone, and I'm going to walk away after I say this. Are, are you going to be able to eat your dog, Bill?
I'm writing this article, and the intent of the article is to restore and preserve land, water, wildlife and other natural resources. Now, I've heard that we already have plans for the, um, identified parcels to be put into conservation, many of them, and I would like to know what percentage of the pieces has been directed towards conservation, which would fulfill the first part of this article, to restore and preserve land, water, and it would also at the same time fulfill the second part, which is to oppose and prevent the sale of the remaining undeveloped land in ownership by the town of Mashpee. As far as I'm concerned, this land does not belong to the tribe yet. Either that or they don't, won't own all the land anyway, we're just kind of friends.
I, you know, I don't remember precisely, I would say there were roughly, I think, a hundred and sixty-three parcels, I think, in the discussion, something like that. The vast majority of it was for recreation, conservation and parkland uses. Some small number were set aside by town meeting for, as reserved for wastewater, uh, use in the future, and less than ten parcels were talked about for potential six to be possibly sold. Just, it's important to remember, nothing happened with the project, so the land is sitting in the natural state that it was sitting in before we started talking about this, and frankly, my expectation is that it's going to stay that way for quite some time, regardless of whose ownership it is, because it was not consensus about moving anything forward, so it sits. Nothing's happened to it, there's no plans to change any uses, there's no plan at this point to do anything, uh, to develop or sell the property.
All right, I'm going here, here, and then I'm going to call for a vote. Sir.
I would be interrating that. I've talked to some people since then, their concerns with the article was that the IGA hasn't been meeting enough, so if, I think we all have the same concerns anyways, if we're assuming a lot of it goes to conservation for some of our pressing needs, if everybody would share it, which is town control, it would go to town, septic, town water, all share, tribal and non-tribal. If it goes into sovereign nation, you have no control. But, so, but I would, hopefully that it would go to conservation, uh, water, affordable wastewater, things that we need. If there wasn't, like I said, if there was going to be a sale to a private party, I would suggest that maybe they meet with the IGA and postpone this article, I'd like to suggest they postpone this article till after they meet with the IGA and emphasize that satisfy a lot of people backing it, and maybe they, they could, you know, agreement that if there is a private sale, they could have first option, because they'll have the proceeds from the casinos soon anyways, they'll have grants, and they could go through that way, but otherwise, I would suggest that we keep it in control where the town and tribe can jointly use this facility for common use.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Hi, I'm Angela Schwamm, 18 Peters Paths, member of the Mashpee Wampanoag tribe and a descendant of the Peters family. I'm George Benray, I'm glad you're still here, but this is the year, um, 2016. I want to say, um, it looks like we probably should have a more meaningful dialogue, and I apologize, um, about the lack of education of sovereign tribal nations as neighbors and what that means for the town of Mashpee, what that means in the increase of resources and services. I just came from Navajo Nation, and if you were from the state of Arizona, you would wonder, understand what a wonderful gift it is to have a sovereign nation as a neighbor as far as a resource. The grant opportunities are double. We will improve your quality of life, we will improve and enhance your tax base. We need to sit down and have a quality education session. We are not a threat, we are partners. Talk to people from the state of Arizona, talk to them about what great neighbors tribal nations are. We create school systems, tax-free school systems. I don't know what else you want. We need to have a meaningful dialogue as a community. We need to identify grant partnerships. We are not a threat, but I also want to talk about the history of the Mashpee Wampanoag, how deep our history is, not just to New England, but building this great nation. Wars were supplied by the whaling industry. We created the whaling industry. This nation was built on the hospitality of our people. We not only greeted your ancestors, the, the history behind it is so deep, our value systems of love and indicators of the land, it's so deep that I'm embarrassed to even discuss it. Read the history of Jamestown, read the history of the descendants from England and Jamestown and what happened there. They died. They cannibalized themselves. They had no help from the Native Americans. Wars were won on the money that came from the resources of the Mashpee Wampanoag. We did not only impact Mashpee, we supported many events in the creation of this great nation, and I am proud to be Mashpee Wampanoag.
Thank you.
I'm trying to gather, but we're beginning to reach Mashpee to honor very little. I'm not a young tribal member, I'm here as well as a member of the community, I want to ask the most, I want to ask the most in my heart. Um, I think it's just sad that we are coming together, the town works, the tribe, this is something that everybody should vote on. We're not voting on giving tribal land back, we act, we're not saying give it to them right now, we're saying that everybody should vote on. There's millions of members of tribal, not millions, but there's hundreds of tribal members as well as town members, non-t tribal that aren't here today to take this for. We shouldn't be expecting that hope from everybody. Everybody should be able to vote. Young people can't be here, people that are old can't be here, and hundreds of people come out for town elections. All we're asking is that it be put on the ballot. We're not asking that we did it to us right now, as well as Article 1 and Article 25, excuse me, 21 and Article 22. It's just in that our opinion be put on the ballot, and that everybody collectively can come together and hit the vote. More discussions can be done before that, I don't think that it's something that can be started right away. Some people are supposed to, they don't know what they're going for, they just don't want us to have that thing, and I just think that it's naive and it's not fair for tribal and non-tribal members that aren't here that can't make votes, that couldn't have made it to the town meeting. But it's very important that this be on the ballot, not just for us, but for town members, for tribal and town members to agree upon it, non-tribal people in this article.
I'm going to move, Jerry Manworth's going to move.
Okay.
The gentleman asked if I would move to postpone to October, and I thought we'd take that up after the last comment, that I may do now?
One, two, three.
Is that a yes? I can do that now?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to postpone this article discussion for the October meeting provided that the tribe and the town reach an agreement to meet a minimum of four times. We really didn't want to throw a number out here, but I don't know how else to regulate that these meetings cannot be postponed, put off, no for, stuff like that, but I do move to meet, move to postpone it to October based on comprehensive discussions with the town selectmen.
Okay, so just for clarification, you can move to indefinitely postpone, that doesn't prevent you from coming back in October, you just have to do the petition again.
Yeah, I'm not moving to indefinitely postpone.
Yeah, then you can't do it to a specific time. This is town council saying that. You can indefinitely postpone, which would allow you to come back in October if you petition again, but you cannot just postpone until October.
So if I indefinitely postpone, um, are, are, do you have a tool where you can keep me hanging out there in the indefinite?
No, frankly, you can go to vote tonight, and even if you lose, you can petition to come back in October if you want. That's all.
Okay, so I guess we do indefinitely. Let me check with my advocate. Okay, I'll do an indefinitely.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to indefinitely postpone. Do I have a second? Second. Okay. All those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 22, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Indefinitely postpone.
Because you didn't include one, I said it in my first statement, but you did include it in the final when I said I do indefinitely, and that was my main argument, but I did say that when I made the motion.
I'll talk to your attorney, you'll be protected, don't worry about it. Yes.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn, all those favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.